Good morning. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 8th meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Saltermeyer.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Chair.
I, Chair Weimeyer.
Present.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation led by Chris McFadden from the Cherry Street West. I pledge allegiance to the Lord, to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
Let us pray. Gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us. We thank you for a couple of mild days before the cold winter arrives. We thank you for these who are here today, these leaders whose trust our citizens put into, and we just pray that you would direct and guide with the power of your Holy Spirit, by your wisdom, the decisions made, Lord, and how the community is directed. Thank you for all the community's support that we do have, and thank you for blessing us with this great community to live in. We just ask that you would be present and that your will would be done. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any correspondence or organizational business today?
I don't believe so.
All right. Do we have any public comment today?
Yes, we do.
All right. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Dr. Begaliar?
Please come up and state your name and your address.
Robert Begaliar, 40 East Rockwood Drive. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Well, after forty years of service to our county hospital, I've had a lot of thought over what's going on with our hospital, and I've thought about speaking to you in the past, but this is the time. After a hundred years, plus or minus a few, we've always delivered babies in Franklin County at the hospital. It's either today or tomorrow that's is the time that that's going to stop. It's critical to the county to have a full-service hospital. The reasons for that are recruiting physicians. Over my service time, I was involved in recruiting more than fifteen physicians to come to Ottawa. It was a good place to recruit to because of the hospital and because we had a good community and good schools. One of the things that was really that happens now is that you're going to get primary care physicians out of family practice programs. These people go into those programs so they can deliver babies. So it's going to be essential to have an obstetrical service at our hospital in order to effectively recruit doctors. As our doctors retire, we're going to have problems with what's going to be the medical care community in the future. But that's only part of the problem. Growth is what we really need to be thinking about, and I think you need to be thinking about. When people look to settle out here in the new industrial park, they're going to recruit the workforce. That workforce is going to be young people with families, people that are going to be interested in looking at a community that has a full-service hospital. As far back as I can remember, the leaders of this community have been committed to and planning for and hoping for growth. It goes back to the 50s with the flood control project. I can name four or five people, if you care, that went to Washington and got that done. Duke Cheney was on the case with the Kansas Department of Transportation to make sure I-35 tape through Ottawa on this route. We've always hoped for growth. It's important to continue to have a full-service hospital. I suggest to you that it's time to be proactive with Advent Health. I believe that the community wants to have a full-service hospital. Forty-five years ago, or fifty, we put on the ballot a half-cent sales tax for Ransom Memorial Hospital, and that's continued and been a great boon to the hospital over that period of the time. Those people voted for a full-service hospital. I think you should consider saying to Advent Health, you say this is a pause, we'll allow you to pause for three months. And at that point in time, it's time for us to ask the public how they feel about their commitment to the support of the hospital. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our consent agenda today consists of the minutes from our meeting on November 1st, special payroll in the amount of $1,203.45.
Most approve. Second?
Commissioner Saltermeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Abstained for number one. Yes, and the rest of it.
Commissioner Weimeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. All right. Our first item of business is to consider approval of a special use permit, application 2308-2083, to allow for the construction and operation of a greenery nursery in the RE Residential Estate zoning district.
Good morning, Commission.
Yes, so this is a nursery slash greenery. Some of you may have already actually seen it if you're on your way out east. Right off 68, there's closer to the property or the county line is a couple of greenhouses, and they would like to start conducting business out of a small building. As they already do kind of conduct a small marketing market-type business out of their home, they want to get out of their house and start doing it properly. The applicant is requesting to conduct business out of a small, family-owned operation that would have relatively small footprint, as the building is proposed is about 560 square feet. Produce will be sold and grown from that parcel. They're not bringing any other product off premises, as I believe. Construction of the structure will not be actually permanent. It'll be more of one of those tough shed-type structures that are on skids, and the reason for that is this project will actually sit within the 68 corridor. Setbacks that haven't, they're not official yet, but if ever the state were to expand the right-of-way for that area, this structure could be easily moved to another location on the premises to avoid any kind of confrontation with the state. The way we would, or, excuse me, the building itself is going to have to have a separate anchoring system that kind of mimics what you would see on a mobile home to ensure that we are staying permanently during a storm in that location, but it won't be on a concrete foundation. So, engineer will have to sign off on that as all of our buildings that do something alternative to our ICC codes would have to. It is proposed that to meet the ADA requirements, either the business has either one permanent stall for parking with ADA standards, or in lieu of that, the planning commission and ourselves came up with the idea that they could actually deliver the produce directly to the vehicle, therefore rendering the need to exit the vehicle nonexistent for people that could not maintain that. They would have to have proper signage that includes the phone number so that they could call their orders in and have it delivered to them from the vehicle. They are proposing a larger-than-normal sign for the RE District. However, it does, in the special use of Article 22, allow for a larger sign if it's attached to the special use permit. It's a four-by-six banner that will be attached to the structure that is being proposed. We checked with the state to make sure that we weren't breaking any rules or regulations as far as signage on the K-68, and as long as it's attached to the building and promoting the business that is being conducted on that parcel, there is no regulations to that portion. We have some conditions attached that were set forth to maximize safety and convenience for customers, including hours of operations being 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., 6:30 p.m. Fire extinguishers will have to be within the building. Maximum number of employees is going to be the two family members, and then during busy times, they're allowed to have two more employees if needed. At this point, they're not proposing to have more employees, but we did give them the leeway if they got big or more busy than they anticipated and needed so. Dust control, the standard dust control method being as there is a driveway that is a rocky dirt road for the drive entering. The ADA stall or the ability to deliver to ADA needs individuals. Further expansion would, or update to the SUP would have to come in front of the board again. And one of the greenhouses currently actually in the county setbacks on the front end off the K-68 side. We are actually going to have to move it back to meet the setbacks to any other structure that would be allowable on the property. I don't think that should be too much of a problem, as they come in sections and we just take the two front sections, bring them to the back, and now he just puts the front end on that. As far as the community itself, we've had one person show up to the meeting, the planning commission meeting, in favor. It was a neighbor. The direct neighbor to the east that shares the driveway has no problems with the utilization, and there's actually an email in your packet that states that they are fine with the driveway being utilized. And we had nobody come out against it. The neighbor to the south was heavily in favor of it, saying that it would help the community generally as a new source of food and small marketability for the area. And then staff and planning commission both recommend approval with an 80 vote.
Any questions for Pat?
Reminds me very much of the one that's just on John Brown just over the line into Miami. I mean, it just felt like a little, just seasonal thing.
Very seasonal, and we took away, we had parameters of what the season exists, but trying to define what business is because it's a growing operation, which you may start your stuff in the winter and it grows throughout, and so we just eliminated that altogether just to keep it as easy and whatnot.
All right. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, the affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to approve special use permitted application 2308-2083 to allow for the construction and operation of a greenhouse slash nursery in the RE Residential Estate zoning district based on the findings and subject to the nine conditions cited in the attached resolution.
No move. Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Saltermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. Our second item of business, consider approval of special use permit application 2308-2082 to allow for a small seasonal hunting cabin in an A1 agricultural zoning district.
Okay, yes. So we have a cabin that is proposed to sit on the 68 acres that is just north of the Homewood exit. There's the RV park, if you go across Idaho, there's a large lot that starts on the Idaho side, wraps around, hits the Jackson side. The entrance to this cabin is on the Jackson side, so it'll be commonly known as 1431 Jackson. The application, or applicant, is requesting a special use permit to allow a small cabin to be utilized as a hunting cabin. And the reason for that is we're going to most likely have to utilize a holding tank for the septic. The reason being is it's in a very heavily wooded area, and the soils really don't allow for any kind of septic system. So without having to do a massive excavation, excavating of the trees, it's not a real primary for any type of septic except for a holding tank. We don't really have any, other than a variance, we don't really have any good way of changing our regulations as they state right now. We don't have a whole lot of allowances for a holding tank, but a hunting cabin is one of those abilities to, and we have the precedence within the county where we have some hunting cabins that actually have holding tanks on them. The condition of this SUP is complying with all building and sanitation permits for the project, and the applicant will have a licensed pumper provide a year-long, a yearly log with dates and locations of disposal that will be reported to the planning department so we can continue to make sure that they are properly pumping their septic tank. We did not have any communications for or against. Staff recommended approval of special use permit, and in a seven-one-to-one vote, it was recommended for approval through Planning Commission.
Any questions?
Holding tank's the only thing I'd have any question of. I know we just turned down an operation here, not the year, last year, of one of my wells there because they did have a holding tank, and we didn't allow them to move forward, and they had a holding tank in place. So I don't have a problem with it, we just need to be pretty consistent about how that there could be somebody else next week come back and you allow them to have one.
I will say that we're, we were trying to figure out a solution to this issue. So what, there's a long story to this, but to make it short, they purchased the structure from the school, from West Franklin, and they were not made aware, because this goes back to us now permitting those structures being built by the industrial arts class. That's what we're trying to, we're trying to mitigate through that premise. Going forward, they will have a notification of what their septic will have to be if they purchase this land it here in this. So we're trying to figure out a way to land this structure. They're trying to do a good thing, not knowing all the facts because it just kind of happened. But you're right, we do need to set a precedence of what we're going to do with that, and if it's changed to our regulations, we can attest to that later, but in this case, it's kind of a one-off situation.
The one that we turned down, was it more of a, I can't remember, a party?
It was more of a, yeah, it was more of a wedding venue, party venue.
So way more use than a freaking cabin.
It was a sales lot for cattle.
Right.
Yeah, that's a lot more, a lot more people involved.
And that, right. Yep.
All right. Well, if anybody wants to make an affirmative motion, it would be, I make a motion to approve special use permit application 2308-2082 to allow for a small seasonal hunting cabin in an A1 agricultural zoning district based on the findings and subject to the five conditions cited in the attached resolution.
No move. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
I have reservations about the holding tank situation. Like Dunn said, we did disapprove of one before of this situation, I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Weimeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Saltermeyer?
No.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right. Our next one, consider the approval of rezoning application 2307-2077 to rezone approximately 45.75 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the A2 transitional agricultural district, and rezoning application 2307-2078 to rezone approximately 32.11 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the RE residential estate district.
Okay, yes. This property is commonly known as 2729 Nebraska Road, located about exactly one mile east of the city of Ottawa. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 80 acres. The first split was done administratively to create two 40-acre parcels. Three acres was then given to a friend of the northeast corner to allow for their land to be a total sum of 10 acres. This was done through a boundary line adjustment that also moved the rear property line up to the north on the east end, and there are photos to kind of show you how that was done. That left us a 32-acre parcel and then a 45-acre parcel. We're then doing two lot splits, one for the 32 acres, so we have two equal 16s, and then one going north-south to have a 20 and a 25. So what we're doing is we're rezoning the 16s or the 32 total to RE, and then the 20 and the 25 to A2, coming from the A1 district. There are 23 notices sent out. We didn't have any formal or written for or against to staff prior to the meeting. Planning commission recommended approval via three to two, and one abstained. Concerns that were brought up had to do with taking agricultural land out of circulation to allow, that is allowing too much development in the area. One individual from the public did go on record to state that they disagreed with the large sub-development, but the rezoning did not appear to be significant enough to create a problem in the community. However, did state that more development in the area might be a problem in the future if it were to continue. Another individually, excuse me, another individual from the public was staunchly against the rezoning as it took a much more, took too much farmable land out of circulation and appears to go against the overall agenda of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval as it meets the requirements to be considered rural development as these are larger lots and two still remain in the agricultural category districts. So, as it was a three-two vote, it was a little contested and discussed, as you probably saw in your minutes. Staff still does stand by the recommendation of approval as it, the area is relatively close to the city, and many of the properties in the area match the same zoning districts as these.
Any questions or comments?
I think commission's a seven-person board, isn't it?
It is, but at the time, one was not present, and one had to abstain because he was a neighbor to the...
Still counts as a majority? It was three-two.
Three to two, three to two.
He's not present, but...
No, he means the majority of the whole board.
I mean, if three of us were here, I guess it'd... I think you could conduct business with three.
You have nine, we had six, and then one of...
You need the majority of the board or the majority of them present, is what I'm saying. Majority of the quorum.
Five would be the majority.
Majority of the quorum, okay.
So we do have a quorum.
That makes sense, I guess if three of us are here, it only takes two, but, okay.
The only thing that kind of bothers me is that everybody needs to do what they can do with their property, to move forward with their life, whatever, but we do have in our comprehensive plan that we'll do everything we can to protect prime agricultural farm ground. And I don't mean to sell or not the law, just to potentially take it out of, out of production, I guess I'm trying to say, a little bit, so, and you can see by the vote, it's how the people feel one way about it, and how the people, and possibly one person just voted because to give the people the right to do what they want to do with their property, not to let either direction, you know?
These are big enough that even if they take a couple acres and put a residence on there, the majority of acres could still be used for...
Yeah, well, nobody's, I mean, I don't believe there's any plans for them.
They're creating lots that we're creating.
Correct, and they're, they are technically farmable still. I mean, just because somebody purchased them doesn't say they will stop farming them, it just makes more boundary lines.
I agree with Don more than, a lot of them we've looked at recently. This does highlight what we know we're going to have to discuss when we get to the overall, what is it called, the...
Comp Plan.
The Comp Plan. We update that, that housing prices and these lots are getting higher and higher, and they're, they're competing more than ever for farm ground, and we're going to have to decide what, I guess, way the property rights versus the community's desire to stay agricultural.
Well, if anybody wants to make an affirmative motion, it would read as follows. I make a motion to approve rezoning application 2307-2077 to rezone approximately 45.75 acres from the A1 agriculture district to the A2 transitional agricultural district, and to approve rezoning application 2307-2078 to rezone approximately 32.11 acres from the A1 agriculture district to the RE residential estate district, and to make the official county zoning map accordingly. Anyone want to make that motion? I will make a motion. Can I make a motion to approve? Chair, I make a motion to approve. Your second?
My second.
Commissioner Weimeyer? Commissioner Saltermeyer?
You repeat the motion for me, please.
It's to rezone?
Prove it.
I doubt what conversation was going both ways, so...
So we're zoning to 45.75 acres from A1 to A2, and rezoning 32.11 acres from A1 to RE.
The motion was to approve?
Yes, the motion was to approve.
Vote no.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
That's a real tough one because I own land in the country, and I think people that own property should have the right to do what they want with their property, but I'm still not agreeing with trying to preserve prime agriculture land to remain an agricultural land, so this is a real tough one for me to vote on this. I'm going to vote no to preserve farm ground.
The fourth item of business, consider awarding the Old Fifty Eyewear Widening Project to Superior Bowen Asphalt Company LLC in the amount of $3,731,916.15.
Commissioners, I would like to ask you all to table this particular item to give us additional time to review the bids and come back with a recommendation probably here in a couple of weeks. We would like to spend a little more time with this before we move forward.
Just to be clear, I'm absolutely committed to still doing the project, it's just there's a lot of ways to build a road, and we want to make sure that we get the best combination of value right now and value down the road.
Absolutely. That's exactly why, yep.
Yeah.
Just doing more than enough due diligence.
We are tabling it, we are not.
Correct.
So, all right. Then we move on to our next item of business, which is to discuss a policy for installation of gates on minimum maintenance roads in Franklin County, Illinois.
Commissioners, I wanted to bring this before you in light of next week's public hearing on Louisiana Terrace. There's a portion of that that we've received a request from the adjoining landowners that joined that portion of road that, that we're discussing. They would like to vacate that is what the hearing is next week, but in light of the conversation that we had last week regarding this matter, I wanted to have a little bit bigger discussion and, and provide a little bit more information and maybe some additional options for us to consider. Before the meeting, I placed on your... Before the meeting, I placed on your, on your, at your spot there, some pictures that I took last week of, of the, of the road. You can see the vegetation has grown up mainly because we haven't, we haven't done anything with that. And, and at least in my time, we did have a boom mower go down the road yesterday and I assume that they're back at it again today to help clean some of that up. But even, even trimming the trees isn't going to necessarily alleviate the, the issues with that road. And so I, I wanted, and because this particular, this particular road segment is different than all of the other vacation requests that we've received. All of the others have either been a single landowner that owned, you know, on either side of the road or all of the landowners in a mile section of minimum maintenance road came together and, and asked us to vacate the road. This is a little bit different circumstance in that there's only about seventeen hundred feet or so that is, that is minimum maintenance and that is the only portion of the road that is being vacated. The, the rest of the road was, just like in the, in the background information, that entire stretch, that entire mile stretch of road was designated as minimum maintenance back in nineteen eighty-nine. About ten years later, a request was presented to the commission to open some of that for full maintenance. And since then, and I, I haven't been able to find anything in any records, but there's almost thirty-six hundred feet of, of that road that is full maintenance now. And there's houses all up and down that, that stretch. There's, I forget exactly how many, there's six or seven homes that, that border that open section of road. The rest of it is, is minimum maintenance and, and it would be awfully hard to make that full maintenance. There's large berms on either side. I'm not sure if, I think some of that might have been manmade somewhere back in time. The rest of it is natural. And so, you know.
At this time, the value that we would get from opening the road up is probably not enough to justify the construction costs, but overall, there's still probably some value of the public retaining that right-of-way for either future use or current access utilities.
Potentially.
Not something we want to give back at this point.
Yes, sir, there, there is a power line that, that runs down through there. And so i-if, if, if we don't vacate the road, what do we, do we, you know, do we leave it like it is and then just obligate ourselves to, to go through there, you know, once a year, once every other year or so and, and trim back the trees to make it passable? Or do we, do we put up gates to limit the access? I did reach out to a few other counties and I provided information from Douglas County and Celine County on how they handle these sorts of issues. So there is a state statute that would allow us to put gates up if that is an avenue that, that you want to go down. I'm not advocating for that. That is probably not my, would not be my choice simply because the, that's another maintenance item. And the two other locations that I know of in the county where we have gates, we're having to repair those gates and, and take care of them almost on an annual basis because of the damage that's done to them and those sorts of things. So, but I am looking for input and direction on how this kind of unique situation should be played out. The, I, I did speak with the petitioners and they would be fine with gates. I, I think they would be fine if we were to keep the trees trimmed back, but that's not gonna alleviate folks going down through there when they ought not to be there. That's, that's really the, the crux of the issue is that folks travel down through there when it's, conditions are not favorable for what I think are recreational activities as opposed to legitimate traffic. So I just wanted to, to bring this up, this discussion before you, before we have the public hearing next week so that, just so that we have different options that we can consider.
And I don't know that there's necessarily even feedback needed today. It's more just you might consider this in advance of next week and if you would prefer to not vacate, then this would be another potential option regarding the gating, so.
I will...
For me, vacates off the table and it could just be, I guess, I'd want to find out first how much success they had clearing it to at least a one-lane road. And then at that point, I mean, obviously, one, we don't really have any one-lane roads, or hopefully we don't. But, but the cost difference between putting some rock down on it so it's not fun anymore for, for going through the mud or putting two gates up.
I will, since the, since we've been out there with a boom mower cleaning some of this up, I'll get back out there before next week and, and take some additional pictures so that, so you can compare what it looked like prior to us doing anything and what it looks like after. And then we, you'll have more information to make a, a better decision.
We don't often have people show up, a large contingent that show up opposed to it, so it usually isn't a question. So, I'm trying to wanting to know our options, so.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I've had one phone call from the folks that live on the full maintenance portion of this. I returned the call and haven't heard back. I have taken calls in the past about this area. Those calls, I would, I would characterize them mostly as one neighbor not being happy with another neighbor as opposed to, you know, a, a larger problem with the minimum maintenance portion. But I, I wouldn't be surprised if folks came, wouldn't be surprised at all. I would also tell you that we have, I think there's, I did a rough count before the meeting started. I think we have like twenty other roads that are dead-end roads that would be similar to this if we vacated it. And there's a variety of reasons for those. This one is still a little bit unique with the number of houses and that sort of thing, so.
And it's narrow before it gets to there, too.
It, it is, yeah. So this portion of the right-of-way is only fifty feet. That's what it was originally opened at, opened up as way back in the, I think in the eighteen hundreds, if I remember correctly. But effectively, there's not fifty feet to work with.
So you'll have an idea on what it'll cost to rock that and get it passable?
Yes, we can, we can estimate that, certainly.
All right. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right. All right, we'll move on then to, if any, we have two more questions I should ask, any more discussion? All right. All right, we'll move on to staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, I just want to have a quick discussion about one of our items today. One of the things I feel like Franklin County's always done super well is, we understand kind of how operations and policy are divided and, and you all have always been greatly deferential to my staff and I, and I appreciate that and like to think that we're very deferential on policy. The decision to preserve agriculture versus developed land is absolutely a policy decision and that's something that we will always aspire to leave in the hands of the five of you. That's the way it ought to be and that is a major discussion that is coming. What I will caution you is, you know, we had a, Don, you brought up a point about holding tanks and what we did for one and versus another. Well, Pat distinguished why we took action this time versus the prior time and it makes sense, it's logical. I think we run a risk of getting into arbitrary decisions if we just decide that we're, on this case, we're not gonna allow development versus this case, it just feels different, so we're gonna allow it. So I think one of the things we probably need to do as soon as we really can is start having those discussions on, okay, when are we going to allow development versus what qualifies, for an instance, where we're just gonna preserve agriculture? Because I do think that is one. I don't think holding tanks are ever gonna be provocative enough to bring a lot of people into, but telling folks what they can and can't do with their land, like they can't develop it, I think, could get pretty. So we just need to establish some kind of, and maybe that's just a complete revision to our comp plan, but it's just, I want to make sure that we can always defend the actions that we're taking and I feel like that is my responsibility as much as anyone, so.
I'd love us to have those parameters to work on and, and before the people get to this point to have the, the...
Yeah.
Have the field goal set so we're not, don't feel like we're moving it on them. And of course, to point out too that the exception with the holding tank is a way to allow somebody's, to respect somebody's property rights and, and work around the, not work around, but find an exception to the rules so that they can do what they want with, whereas, I mean, this...
And just looking at it from thirty thousand feet, I, you have two very admirable goals. Preserving agriculture is incredibly admirable. That's what our heritage is here in Franklin County. It's tradition, it's, but I also, we know we need development on some level or else. We're just, we're either gonna slowly die off as a government and provide less and less services or we're gonna have to raise taxes. So that's truly an issue that's gonna have to be addressed, so.
I know we gave ourselves a two-year, two years for re-looking at those zoning regulations and that first year is almost, well, I wonder, anyway, I think, would we do that in February? The, set the two-year moratorium so that we could re-address, so. It may be something that we really need to start moving to the forefront.
Yeah.
Because there's some hard questions on, yes, agriculture has been our traditional, traditional in the past, but as the city as residential moves this direction, at, at some point, we're gonna have to possibly readdress that. And so it probably, so that, make sure we're all on the same page, something that we need to start, we're putting a timeline on.
We were time and time again during the windmill discussion that we want to preserve ag, preserve ag, preserve act, so.
Only other thing...
Derek, is I thought you were talking about these little, little houses are being developed. I don't think our, they, the zoning attic was to address those little houses.
And I know Pat's had some discussions about those. I, as I sit here in front of you, I don't know the specifics, I'd have to talk to him, but I know that's on his radar. Well, Will, and, and it, the timing of that discussion gets complicated. We brought this up when we were talking about Coats Court, just the, the relative newness of Pat and basically all of his staff, save for thee, like we've gotta allow them time to grow into their positions. But, but certainly that's a discussion that, that is on the horizon. Only other thing today is, one week from today, we're gonna have that department head meeting over lunch. So you might put that on your calendars and I don't know, Janet, is there Canvas that morning as well?
There is.
Okay, okay, that's all I have on hand.
Did I read that email right? From ten to noon? From Amy I got?
She, no, the, the lunch she put from twelve to two, I don't have two hours myself to get.
I just seen, I probably seen something on there, ten to noon, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I am, I am thinking that the Canvas should, you know, not take very long at all. You guys know over the last few years, we've tried to streamline the Canvas. We have, I believe, don't quote me exactly on this, but I think we have about forty provisional ballots to review. So of course, we will review those in advance, bring recommendations and recess briefly to count the ones that you guys recommend counting. So I'm hoping that the Canvas won't take more than about an hour, an hour and a half.
Oh, at ten to twelve, that is including, okay.
Yeah, so, so we would have the commission meeting first. Then we would go down to the courthouse, canvass the election, and then we would have the lunch.
We'll be down there then.
And the lunch is here, the invitation was twelve to two.
It was kind of, it didn't say that.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Yeah, no, I don't anticipate the lunch taking much over an hour, so we'll...
Or our actual deal here then would be twelve.
Twelve to one, one thirty, somewhere in there, yeah. Yep. All right, thanks.
I have, just, just a question. I have on my calendar Board of Health meeting. So I don't know if we have a study session anyway, I don't know.
Okay.
I put that in a long time ago, so whether we do or not, that might be something we need to...
Yep, sounds good.
All right, Pat, do you have anything else today? All right, Paul.
Morning, Commissioners. Just want to remind everybody, tomorrow is our Franklin County Career Day at the high school, so we'll have three hundred and seventy-plus high school juniors participating in that. Want to extend an invitation to all of you, you're welcome to come and, and observe anytime you want. The programming starts at eight forty and then the students will be done around eleven, eleven fifteen. And then we'll open up the gym for the public to come and see the business opportunities from eleven thirty to twelve thirty. So we're, this year, we're just adding a, a component where interested parents and adults can come and kind of see what we're, what we're doing. But it's always one of the best days of the year, as far as I'm concerned, where we get to kind of help our youth, see all the opportunities for them in Franklin County and, and want people to come and see what's happening if they're so inclined to do so. That's all I've got today. Thank you.
Hey, Paul, before it gets around to me, could you come out and tell us on new development, possibly, at the Wellsville area?
Wellsville, there's a lot going on in Wellsville. Of course, they got the MIH ARPA grant that's gonna help put in about a hundred and forty rental units there on the Sixth Street Extension. That Sixth Street Extension's also how they extended the, the new road to the, the new ambulance center, so that's pretty cool. There's also efforts being made on another development of single-family houses, which would be about two hundred units is what they're looking at. And then there at Burt's, in twenty twenty-four, they're gonna add an A and W and potentially a car wash. And then we're also doing, FCDC's helping fund the majority of a market study for a new hotel that could go in right there along Thirty-three as well. And then there's another developer, a couple more developers in town or builders in town that are building between seventeen and twenty-five houses, so a lot going on in Wellsville. Thank you.
Alan, it's, you bringing up Wellsville, we talk about ag versus development and what we don't talk about as much is the city's role in all that. I mean, ideally, you would channel some development into the cities. Issue is you've got to have cities that want to grow and that are pro-growth. Wellsville absolutely is and they are demonstrating that. It's not five houses here, eight houses here, it's mass and planned development and that's...
Should be easier to build a house in a place that already has roads, sewer, water, power.
Yes.
And a process to get it done, yeah.
Yeah, so fully support what's happening in Wellsville and hope to keep partnering with them.
And just, for those that know, or didn't know, just speaking of Wellsville, Mayor Lidle had a major surgery yesterday and happy to report it went very, very well, so very happy for that.
Good thing, because he got voted in again.
Yeah, he got voted in again and he's doing, he's doing well.
Yep, good, good.
Happy his surgery went well. Thank you.
All right. Kristi, do you have anything today?
Good morning. I have a couple of things I want to share with you. The first is back on October nineteenth, we had our inspection for the Board of EMS. The first thing that they inspected were our continuing education files and they ensure compliance with all the Kansas administrative regulations and statutes. The other part of that was the actual service inspection and it ensures compliance with Kansas administrative regulations and statutes. During this procedure, they reviewed our operational and medical protocols, equipment lists, our attendance roster... equipment lists, our attendance roster, call schedule, daily record of ambulance responses, ambulances and equipment, our garages, and our services quality improvement program. And I am happy to tell you that no deficiencies were identified during the process. So, that was incredibly good news. Uh, I know that our, our crews worked very hard every day to make sure that we stay in compliance with, with regulations. Uh, so just wanted to pass that on to, to you all. Uh, second thing, uh, was just a brief update on the Wellsville station. Yesterday, uh, Tom Winter was generous enough to volunteer his time to install the wiring for our eight hundred radio system at the station, and the next step there will be drywall installation, so we're moving quite forward quite quickly.
Wow, awesome.
You guys talked about where an ideal place in the South, what an ideal future location would be?
Kristi and I have talked about that, but with everything.
And it's not, and, and right away, Dale, my thought was that we could at least identify, based on call volume and where you expect to grow and all those things, where a general ideal, uh, location for a future station would be.
Sure.
Not to go right out and buy a piece, but just to have that in our back of our mind if an opportunity ever comes up, or, uh, to, to acquire land. It's cheaper and, uh, better to acquire that when there's an opportunity, not when you have to have it, so.
Yes, it is.
Well, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Dustin, do you have anything today? All right, David Lee.
So, I've got, uh, several things here. One, uh, on Monday, I was contacted by, um, uh, well, somebody with the, uh, Kansas LTAP and the Kansas Association of Counties. Um, K U has been awarded a, uh, uh, state grant, uh, or, or funding, rather, to, uh, do a Kansas transportation research project. They call it a K Tran, um, project. And their goal is to develop, um, specifications for aggregate, um, with a goal of reducing dust and improving sustainability on local gravel roads. Um, and I was approached to see if we would be interested in participating in that study. Um, the, the county involvement would be, uh, working with the researchers with K U to, uh, identify some well-performing roads and some poorly performing roads, uh, road segments, um, um, providing traffic control during the sampling efforts, and we had helped them, uh, load the material, and then we repair those particular places. Uh, it would also include developing some test sections of road to test the, uh, the different materials that they might use, and we would need to, uh, help maintain that and, and, uh, work with the researchers, reach, excuse me, the researchers to, um, monitor the performance of those test segments. So, there's only, um, I'm aware of a couple of counties out west and a couple of counties around here that are gonna participate, that, participate in this. Uh, I think it would be, um, a great thing to, to be a part of, um, if you all are, think it, think it's a good idea. No, sir.
They'd be testing out different binders? It's not processes that they're testing, it's binders?
And it's different, uh, different types of rock, different, um, uh, different specifications for that rock. Maybe some binders and those sorts of things. I don't know the full depth of the, the research.
The product, do we have to purchase?
They would, uh, no.
Bring in hard rock from somewhere?
I, I think that is a part of their, their responsibilities. Ours would be, uh, assisting with some labor and, and those sorts of things while the work is being done, is my understanding.
What about grading the roads, once they have their product on?
I would assume that they would give us instructions on, on how often to, to take care of those and, and that sort of thing. I haven't, I, I wasn't in the office yesterday, and so I got the news on Monday and, and wanted to present the idea to you all. If you're interested, I can dig into those details and, and come back to you before we, um, formally agree. I don't think so, I, I think that it, it came in late in Monday and.
Well, no, that was a question.
Oh, oh, absolutely, absolutely, I'm sorry.
I think I heard the same thing he did, so, yeah, good, yeah.
I like the idea of exploring it, cause really, the calcium solution's the only option we have for dust control. It'd be great to find out what works, what works well, where the value is without having to experiment with our or somebody else's money, but, uh, yeah, there's a lot of details to flesh out, you and Derek could work on that.
Yeah, at, at first blush, it seems like, uh, us being, you know, on the ground through these things to be able to see firsthand and experience it firsthand, some, some value there. But certainly, there's a lot of unanswered questions that, that we need to investigate.
I think if we can help out with stuff like that, it's great, more than anything. I wanna make sure, David.
Absolutely, yep.
Just in light of everything else.
Yes, sir, yep.
But provided that's not an impediment, then I'm not.
All right.
Cause not always the cheapest way is the best way. I mean, you know, in, in the long run, maybe, maybe what they'll produce is maybe a more expensive way, but maybe ways better in, in the future, so.
Not just have that one card to play, the calcium solution for dust control, I mean.
Love to have some additional.
Get the whims of the market on that.
Yep, uh, additional tools in the tool belt.
Yep.
Uh, the, a couple of other things, uh, blade patching, we've had, uh, uh, some of our roads, um, uh, deteriorating a little bit more than we anticipated this year. And so, the last couple of days, uh, our folks have been doing some blade patching. We had seven or eight, uh, locations around the county that needed some attention before we got into winter. Uh, that work was completed yesterday, and I'm waiting on, um, uh, an estimate from Kilo to the two bridges, the one on John Brown and the other on Cloud. Um, uh, I don't think blade patching, those approaches, is gonna be a good thing. And so, we're waiting on, uh, a price from Kilo to be able to do that work for us. Uh, we've got it tentatively scheduled for the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, so I'm just waiting on the, the final pricing to either, to, to get approval to move forward on that. But, uh, I think that's something that also needs to be done. And the last thing I wanted to visit with you about is, it's been about a year since we instituted the PubWork software, um, and, uh, I'm gonna run through some data real quick. Um, I wouldn't have been able to provide this data to you, um, in any sort of cost-effective way in years past, based on the way that we do things. But, in ten minutes, running a couple of reports, uh, I'm able to generate this, this information. So, in the last, in the last year through, uh, uh, October thirty-first, we have, uh, blade patched, uh, forty-seven different locations, and that doesn't include the locations that we just did. Uh, we've spot-bladed another four hundred and four different locations. We've bladed, uh, during general maintenance, general maintenance, seven thousand, uh, and thirty-seven road segments in that year. Uh, we've taken care of five hundred and fifty-four brush and tree-related, um, uh, projects, added gravel to six hundred and two road locations, uh, worked on a hundred and forty-four culvert-related projects, a hundred and seventy-two ditching-related projects, uh, rebuilt sixteen road segments, uh, uh, had fourteen hundred and nine, uh, yeah, just over fourteen hundred sign-related projects that we've worked on, uh, picked up trash in a hundred and sixteen different locations. Uh, some of those might be repeat locations multiple times, and we've patched two hundred and five locations. We have also had, um, seven hundred and fifty-three service requests turned in. Those service requests come from, uh, our own staff and then the general public. We've closed six hundred and thirteen with a hundred and forty remaining open. So, that's eighty-one percent that, of the pro, service requests that have come in, we've taken care of. Um, the top five service request types, um, are, uh, the number one is culverts. Eleven percent of the requests, uh, are culvert-related. Uh, ditch work is, is right next to that at nine point six percent. Signs, nine percent, uh, general road maintenance, eight and a half, and then utility permits, uh, just over eight percent. So, those are our type, uh, top five service request types. Uh, the next one drops down below six percent, so, uh, there's a bit of a separation between those five. So, all of that information I can generate, uh, with ease, and I look at that, I report it to my staff. We use that information, um, uh, to set priorities and look at the open service requests, uh, to, uh, establish the, the weekly work. So, it's been a great investment. Um, I would like to expand on, on some of the hardware capabilities that we have, but I think for a year's worth of time, um, it is really, hasn't really changed how we do things, but it definitely, uh, changes the understanding of what we do and the expenses and the time commitments for those sorts of things. So, I appreciate, uh, the investment that you all made.
Senator Convo, your department's not busy at all? Oh, my gosh, I also think about, five years ago, when I started, it seemed like every week, somebody was in here complaining about their ditches. And we haven't, you know, so I, I, and, and we know it's been a long, they, it hasn't been taken care of for a long time, so it's not gonna happen overnight, but obviously, you're making headway.
Yeah.
Uh, in some of the worst areas, and then you just, you know, kinda move on, so.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and, and our folks work hard, and, and, uh, I would say this is, um, they've always done this kind of work, but we haven't had a, uh, efficient way to track the work. Um, and we really didn't know costs associated with, with that work and, and time involved and those sorts of things. So, now, we've, we've got about a year's worth of data, and, and we'll really be able to start analyzing that and, and, um, to provide us more information so that we can mold the department and the, the way we do things.
All right, Janet, your department hasn't been busy at all, has it?
No, uh, we wrapped up reporting last night about nine thirty. The report, the results are on the, um, Clerk and Elections page on our website. Um, I know COFO also has them posted on their website, so if anyone wants to take a look at those, there are a lot of questions that remain unanswered from those reports, just cause we have several really close races that, um, could potentially be decided, um, either by the write-ins or by the, um, provisional ballots. So, we do have one local mayor race, um, where the person whose name was on the ballot got thirty-five votes, and there are thirty-five write-in votes. So, um, there, I think there are also some provisional ballots that will play into that race also, so. We have a really close school board race out in the Wellsville School District. Um, so, we're gonna be putting all these results together, um, obviously getting a, a, a good recommendation for you guys when we have the Canvas next Wednesday. So, if anyone has any questions about elections, feel free to call me, reach out. I'm happy to give answers as I have them. We won't be going through the, uh, write-ins till probably at least tomorrow. Um, we're planning on, um, hopefully hosting our audit tomorrow afternoon. So, um, those things are gonna, we're gonna be working through those things.
And I take it we didn't even hit twenty percent voter turnout?
Not sixteen.
Sixteen.
Which I thought was pretty good, I thought, I thought we would be about, about eleven or twelve, so. So, sixteen was pretty good.
Who writes the, the, uh, questions to be voted on?
The, the question that was on the ballot was directly out of statute.
That's, I mean, you read it, you read the whole thing, and you don't know whether you're voting for it or you're voting against it, the way it's written is, is really confusing to most people.
So, some questions are extremely confusing. Um, uh, most people felt like the one that was on our ballot this time, county-wide, was fairly straightforward, and that was what was in the resolution that, um, we brought to you guys to review and to place that question on the ballot, and it was directly out of statute. It was word for word out of statute.
I've heard that from a couple folks and, and worked closely with me on that, and that was basically the only way that.
Okay.
So, yeah, was pleased with the question, and yeah, we don't get a lot of leeway. I guess, I can't speak to every question, but in this instance, we didn't have.
Okay.
How's that look like it's coming out?
What's that?
How's that coming out?
Um, it looks like it's going to very easily pass.
Your unaudited was three to one?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully, hopefully people voted the way they wanted to vote, so.
Uncanvassed, not audited.
Right.
All right, anything else for you? All right, we'll move on to Commissioner, uh.
Uh, when, when you get a few phone calls, is there anything on the ballot even to vote on? You, you realize real quick, probably that question is really gonna be confusing to them because they don't even realize there's even anything on there. I mean, if it's something like we have all seen ahead of time and talked about it, and other people have, but you take the population that hasn't seen it, hadn't heard it, and then all of a sudden, it's there in front of them.
The question is, you change this, you really don't have any choice but to put this on the question, do you? The statute, the.
Then, uh, I, uh, did attend the rantal meeting the other night. Uh, they do have a new city attorney, Jennifer Spangler, if I'm saying it right, is their new city attorney down there now. Uh, I'm gonna go through a lot of, just a lot of small stuff. One of the big things was, though, they've been talking about applying for a grant for a new water line in the city, and I think they hit the, hit the lucky switch because they just announced eighty-five million dollars that, in the next five years for Kansas, for small municipalities and so forth to apply for. And they're kinda like, we was one time, we was preparing a road deal, and we had our prepared one, and all of a sudden, it popped up that they're gonna apply, so they're probably gonna be the first, first ones to apply for down there, so, that sounds, and they already have their, their engine B and G is their engineering firm, so they already got, they're ready, you know, and Eric popped up all of a sudden while they were getting it all ready, so possibly they might come right in the door, get a new water line down there. Uh, they'll have a couple things, uh, they'll probably have the bids, this popped up as another good deal, because they were talking about the rate increases it was gonna take to pay for the new water. Well, if they can get the grant, then, then that will leave, they saying they will have something, but they haven't had the crease down there in fifteen years, so, uh, possibly that will work a bunch of that, you know? If they did get the grant, what they can do, you know, uh, going well for me tonight, that's all.
Well, I just wanna say, uh, this is, uh, Veterans Day, Saturday, they'll be a big parade in Ottawa, and I just wanna recognize all the veterans and active-duty veterans, and thank them for their service.
Um, I went to the F C, F C D C luncheon on, um, Thursday at the high school. Um, basically, it's a turnover of the board, you recognize the old president and, um, welcome the new president and the new board members. Um, Chamber Coffee was, on Friday, was at Rock Creek of Ottawa. Um, a lot of renovations that they've done, and it really is a nice facility. City of Princeton on Monday had a fairly long meeting. They're getting some pushback from the community on proposed, um, R V Park at the corner there of John Brown and Fifty-Nine. Um, so, there was a lot of community comments. Um, also, they've been dealing with a lot of water leaks. Um, kinda glad we don't have a water system or electric system because, and it's probably, that could be just, uh, the, the drought, uh, but anyway, they're dealing with a lot of that. Um, listen to the City of Ottawa, one of their meetings, um, on Monday, where they had a bid opening for their, uh, the city-owned private, and they're ready to reject both bids. Uh, I think the bids were good, it was just a matter of what, what the companies were gonna charge the city, then to continue to have their service, um, as well as all of their, uh, all, all of the.
Subscribers?
No, no, they have, they have to have certain, um, things in place to make sure that they don't have leak, that'll leak. And so, just to keep all of that, uh, under their roof, they, at this point, are not going to reselling their, the city-owned private. Otherwise, we're not having a session on Monday. Um, um, yeah, I think, well, if there's anything else to come from the board?
Good morning.
Thank you.
All right.